Mr. McKee, do you accept?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Harbaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Hayduk?
Yes.
Mr. McKee? Ms. Harbaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Hayduk?
Yes.
Mr. McKee?
Yes. Given it possible, the President.
Dr. Diller?
Norcross.
Mr. Raiber?
Raiber.
On a motion of five to four, Mr. Norcross has been-
And three, election of board members, this is all of our committees, election of board members to the Joint Committee of the Franklin Learning Center. Three members for one-year term. Yeah, we need nominations. I'm sorry, I didn't say that.
So, I nominate Stephanie Gaus.
I nominate Mike Hayduk.
Second.
Who was second, Mr. McKee?
Yes.
Do you want to do a roll call vote, or do you want to wait till they-
I think we do all, we want to do all three.
All together?
I'd like to do all three, yeah.
I doubt there'll be no votes.
Unless they vote no on their own, themselves. Okay. Mrs. Gaus, you accept the nomination?
Yes.
Okay. Two more, please.
I nominate, uh, Mr. Hayduk.
Second.
Alright, motion by Mr. McKee, second by Mrs. Gaus, and a third nominee.
I nominate, Mr. Raiber.
I second it.
Okay, Mr. Raiber, do you accept?
I accept.
Motion by Mrs. Gogler, second by Dr. Diller. Okay, roll call, or just?
I think we can do ayes and ayes on this.
Okay, we'll do this all with voice vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Aye.
Ayes have it, and so move. Okay, 3.02, alternates for a one-year term at Franklin Learning Center. That would be the same, the opposite three who aren't on Career Tech, correct? Because they meet the same nights?
I think the meetings are-
They're listed there, um, the fifteenth of January, twelfth of March, and the seventh of May.
Okay.
I'm willing to serve as an alternate.
And I'll nominate Dr. Diller, as an alternate.
I'll second it.
I nominate, Mr. Piper.
I'll second.
I'll nominate, Mr. McKee.
I'll second.
Okay, Dr. Diller, Mr. Piper, and Mr. McKee, do you all accept your nominations?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Motion to close nominations.
Motion to close.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hayduk, second by Mr. McKee. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Ayes have it, so move. Now we'll vote on the three, uh, nominated, uh, for alternates for one-year terms at Franklin Learning Center. Dr. Diller, Mr. Piper, and Mr. McKee. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Ayes have it, and so move. Item four, election of board member to the Joint Committee of the Franklin County Career and Technology Center. Uh, this is a three-year term. Uh, this was my term that has expired, or will be expiring. Motion and second, please.
I nominate, Ed Norcross.
Second.
Okay, I will accept, any other nominations? Okay, motion by Mrs. Gogler, second by Ms. Harbaugh. Uh, you have a motion and second to close nominations, please.
Move to close nominations.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Mr. McKee, second by Mr. Hayduk to close nominations, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Ayes have it, and so move. Now, a vote on, um, my nomination at, for a three-year term on Career Tech Center Board. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Ayes have it, and so move. Item five, and 5.01, point one member for one-year term to, um, Franklin County Area Tax Board and Franklin County Tax Collection Committee. Motion and second for a nominee, please.
This is the one I'm, I'm in there.
That's for Tammy, yep. Tammy?
I moved to appoint Tammy Stouffer.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Raiber, second by Mr. McKee. Motion to close nominations.
Motion to close.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Ga- Mrs. Gaus, and second by Mr. Hayduk to close nominations. So now we need to vote on appointing Mrs. Stouffer as our representative to Franklin County Area Tax Board and Franklin County Tax Collection Committee for a one-year term. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Ayes have it, and so move. Item 5.02 is, um, one alternate for, excuse me. My apologies, excuse me. Need to, uh, motion and second for an alternate to, uh, Franklin County Area Tax Board and Franklin County Tax Collection Committee. So do I have a motion and second to appoint Mrs. Danette Nolt as our alternate?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McKee, second by Mr. Raiber. Any other nominations? Hearing none, motion to close nominations?
Move to close.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Ms. Harbaugh, second by Mr. McKee. All those in favor of closing nominations signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Ayes have it, and so move. Now we'll vote on the motion to appoint Mrs. Danette Nolt as our alternate to the Franklin County Area Tax Board and the Franklin County Tax Collection Committee for a one-year term. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Ayes have it, and so move. Item 6.01. Let the sun shine in, uh, need a motion and second to approve our board meeting and committee of the whole dates. Uh, these will be advertised, uh, any additions to these would then need to be a special advertisement, as needed. Um, the schedule is, continues as status quo, where we try to take the month of July off unless something important pops up. So, ask for a motion and second to approve our school board meeting dates for 2026 as presented.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Gogler, second by Dr. Diller. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, and so move. Okay, item seven is for information, um, board workshop, or social date, uh, we're gonna have a after-Christmas Christmas party, um, we'll all be on our New Year's resolutions. So we'll have carrots and celery and water with lemon in it. Just for your information. Alright.
Before you go in, I guess it's probably a procedural thing, maybe with articles of agreement, but we don't have alternates for the Career Tech Board. I think it's important that if we are absent, that we ask for someone to take our places in that, um, board. We've had situations where we've barely made a quorum because of absences, including our own district, but other districts also don't follow through with alternates on a regular basis. But I think it's something that is important that we remember to notify somebody to see if we can get a replacement.
Yep, great point, thank you, Fay. Okay, go ahead, I'm gonna adjourn our reorganization meeting. With that, shuffle papers here. Yes.
Yes.
Our first committee of the whole meeting, um, this session, uh, for Tuesday, December 2nd, 2025, um, prior to this evening's meeting, uh, the board did meet an executive session to discuss real estate matters, personnel matters, and litigation. So we had to trifecta again tonight. Um, that, please jo- join me, rise for the pledge allegiance in moment of silence.
Pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item 3.01, superintendent's report, Mr. Bigger.
Yep, thank you, Mr. Norcross. Um, last meeting I did bring up the snow procedures and thank goodness, we, uh, talked about them a little bit. We didn't need them with students today, but we did need them for the staff. So two messages went out, uh, one last night and one this morning about today. So the season is upon us and it is, uh, early. So, um, I hope, hopefully that's not more to come, but I fear it is. Uh, congratulations to all the new members and also the re-elected members. Welcome officially, Gary. Um, I do want to thank Fay Gogler for sending out, uh, individual emails to all the staff members who were dark blue in P VAS, and that's an internal term, in a Friday folder, but she took the time to email every one of them, fifty or sixty plus emails, just to thank them for their dedicated, um, efforts in student achievement. And for those that don't know, dark blue in our world is three consecutive years of growing kids beyond a year's worth of growth. So we're truly catching them up and exceeding the year's worth of growth. So thank you for doing that. Uh, I'd like to thank Bev for, um, doing the thankful messages right before Thanksgiving. There was a ten-minute audio that went out. That was, uh, all her idea and thank you for those who participated. They were wonderful to hear and, and, um, it was, it was touching. So thank you for taking that lead on doing that as well. Um, we will be releasing podcasts. The first one went out with Michael Baum and myself. So we'll have one about every other week, um, for the rest of the year. So I've enjoyed them as much as I maybe didn't want to do them. I've realized that the, the community and folks live in the podcast world and especially video. So we did video record them and we are sending them out so they can see us doing the podcasts. They're about five to seven minutes long and they're related to our initiatives and changes in the district. So the first one was Michael Baum. I believe Jonathan Michael might be next in technology talking about AI. Mrs. Luffy is on the list talking about academies and secondary schools. So stay tuned to those podcasts as they are, uh, very popular. If you've seen the communication, um, notes from Brian Miller in the Friday folder, we get a lot more volume through video, uh, than we do anything else. That'll go to five and six thousand people will watch that video versus a, a newsletter that goes out or a, a one-way communication of text only. You don't get many views. Uh, last but not least, we are working on our annual report, um, and we are going to combine that with an old-school calendar. Remember the calendar used to get put on the fridge? So we're gonna do the old-school calendar since we have a new calendar for twenty-six, twenty-seven, and we'll put our annual report on the blank pages above the calendar. So we'll have the fridge hold, uh, calendar for next year. We're working on that report to hope to have that out in January or February. And just reminder for you all, dress nice on December sixteenth. It's picture day. So we'll have our pictures taken as a board. So make sure, uh, you dress, uh, a little bit differently on December sixteenth. That ends my report.
Thank you, Mr. Bigger. Um, item 3.02, president's report also. Welcome. Congratulations, Mr. Piper. Um, four years, hopefully you're still smiling. I'd like to thank fellow board members for, um, once again nominating me as president. Um, as I've said multiple times, uh, uh, everybody has their own different style. Um, and I kinda, what I, style I follow is, uh, I say it all the time, is I let you all talk as much as you want to talk. Uh, sometimes Chris gives me the, starts giving me the sign, but, uh, I believe in, uh, the communication happening and happening out here, as little as possible in an executive session, as much as possible in public session. Sometimes you just, there's certain things you obviously can't do in public session. Uh, wish we didn't have to talk about those negative things and we could, wouldn't have to have executive session meetings, but necessary evil. Uh, this is a very abbreviated meeting tonight, uh, even though I'm gonna talk probably too long. You know, as Mr. Bigger said, it was a day off for, for the students and, um, there aren't any real presentat- presentations tonight, so we don't have a lot of our staff with us. Thank you, Ms. Luffy, for coming out, braving the, the post-snow. Um, you'll get an extra gold star for attending tonight. Uh, but just one bit of information, uh, prior to the meeting, uh, Mr. Bigger, uh, Mrs. Gogler, myself, we met with, uh, Mr. Frye from PFM to talk a little bit about some financing scenarios. Um, if you think back, many, many months ago, we had a presentation on one number for buildings, uh, in that two-hundred-and-thirty-million-dollar range, and there's been some additions since then. One of the biggest addition being when the board decided to do the middle school at the south property, not the north property. And as the design process has continued, other changes have come about. So, you know, that two-hundred-and-thirty-million-dollar number is growing. So we had a conver- good conversation with Mr. Frye and probably at a February committee of the whole meeting, he will be presenting. Usually he comes with just one, hey, this is what you have. Couple things, one, this goes to the public awareness and the public investing in this, uh, Schools of Distinction by 2030 project. This is a big investment. So there's gonna be three, maybe at least, at least two, maybe three different scenarios presented as far as the amount of borrowing versus other methods of, of paying for, paying and investing in these projects. So, um, that's the one comment I said we'll always have something about the schools of distinction, so I get to do it tonight. Um, with that, consent agenda items, 5.01 through 5.06, they're all pretty similar, uh, in nature. Early graduation, the list is included in your packet. Um, NJRTC instructor, that's just, you know, we've had, we have two of them, so it's the same job description, I assume, maybe some minor changes. Uh, repo- repository sales consent, that's just normal. Uh, tax exoneration, we really don't have much of a say in that anyway. The county tells us what to do on that. Um, legal fee agreement with our solicitor, and curriculum map for advanced video produ- production. But they're the six items that would then get, will go forward on the sixteenth meeting, um, for, uh, board vote. Do you have anything to add to any of those, Mr. Bigger?
No, the, the only addition would be early graduation. We'll also have Cassius, and I think Mrs. Luffy has some announcements to make at the sixteenth meeting, correct? A ceremony and all that, yeah. So she'll have more information to share about a mid, mid-year graduation first time.
So there'll be more than seventeen students, is what you're saying? Great. Okay, that are applying. Okay, great. Okay, any questions on the consent agenda items?
I noticed that there's another curriculum map, uh, I noticed there's another curriculum map out in the lobby for finance courses that, um, at a later date that we're going to cover that.
Yeah, those ones out there are related to the course scheduling book or the program of studies. When that comes for full approval, which will be new, uh, for this board, the new courses out there will come along with that. And this one, the only reason this one is on here now is because they want to start it in the spring, I believe. Uh, so the one that you have on there, 5.05.
Okay, if, yes, sir, Mr. Raber.
I have a question about five oh six. Just for the board and for the public, can you remind us what the requir-
For the board and for the public, can you remind us what the requirements are for early graduation in terms of grades, attendance, discipline, what, how, you know, how much
Mrs. Luffy, do you want to take that one?
Just passing grades, are you excelling?
Uh, so they have completed all the graduation requirements per the current graduation, um, policy. In addition, they also had to complete a graduation pathway, which is act number eighty-eight, and that has to be also completed for them. So there's different pathways in that, and we could do a whole presentation on that, um, but they would have to indicate that. And so when I said for approval, like Mrs. Lotzleger does for all of them to make sure that they have completed all of their credits and kind of just like a credit check. Even though the counselors have been doing this already, she's just one final stand for approval.
And what are some reasons why you see early graduation as a popular recent trend?
So the reason why there might be more this year particularly at Cassius than normal is because of the block schedule, and students can complete all of their credits mid-year compared to previous years when they haven't completed their credits until, you know, May or June. Um, the opportunity has always been at career magnet school for early graduation. Um, and so, you know, I think now that perhaps when we work is doing this, that it's a reason to celebrate and give them the opportunity to have a graduation ceremony, something on starting their adventures right away, so they won't be hearing May or June when they have our traditional graduation.
I've always been curious relative to the career tech students who opt out of their third year, I assume, at the career tech center because they've got their academic, um, credits. Does that impact anything relative to completion criteria for career tech?
So without knowing the specifics about that individual student, um, I would say that probably they were not successful in some of their core graduation requirements, math, science, business, social studies, um, and so they would have to take those courses again potentially, or, um-
No, no, I'm referring to the student who had their academics in the first semester, which allowed them then to be early graduations. Second semester, they would have been in their third, um, semester at career tech where they would either, um, be out on co-op or back in the classroom. How does that, you know, that, I would assume, impacts some of the certifications and so forth? I saw a number of students who were ag mechanics or, uh, different topic areas or, you know, career areas, and I just was curious as to how that affects the career tech's, um, records, I guess.
Yeah, their completion rates-
Yeah.
It would not be favorable, but, um, but I can look into that for sure. As to why we would be advocating and supporting and encouraging for these new decisions, I would think that the better option would be for them to keep that in those programs so that they can complete the certifications for their own country.
Well, and, and likewise, we have such a number of students who want to get into those programs, and whenever they're leaving, that leaves an open spot, but yet there's not an opportunity to fill that spot because it's just the senior year, uh, level. It just, I don't know. I just think it needs to be considered as to how it can be better utilized as far as the career tech-
All schools, that's just not Chambersburg. That's all schools have the option to do that? Or is it just Chambersburg students?
I don't, I don't know how other schools handle it.
Okay.
I know from a former district that I know very well, um, that sometimes students their senior year were done with career type programs. So not that many, um, but, you know, in my former role, like, there were a few students here and there that did not return back to the career tech, even though we were encouraged and encouraging them to complete the program.
It would probably, it would impact their NOCTI, but I don't know. If you don't take the NOCTI test, it might not count as a ding, if you will, against career tech if they don't take the test. I don't know.
Yeah, that, I mean, it would impact their scores for sure.
Yeah.
Well, Ms. Schuman, I think, is coming to an upcoming meeting, so maybe we can-
Next one.
Good question.
Inquire about that.
But a lot of the shops are also, they're, they're really geared for the students to go out on co-op their senior year, but then I think they still come back and take their NOCTI exams.
Hmm, yes, they do, yeah.
Other questions on consent items? Okay. Item seven, finance and facilities, gifts, grants, and donations. Uh, any questions for Mr. Bigger on that, or Mr. Bigger, do you have any items to expand upon?
Thank yous for the continuous donations we get.
Okay, that will go forward. That will be on, that'll be a separate vote-
Yes.
At our next meeting. Policy and legislation, first reading of policy. Um, I don't have my cheat sheet handy here. Eight point oh ru- first reading of policies, there'll be two, policy two-twenty-nine, student fundraising, and policy two-thirty-four, uh, pregnant, parenting, married students. Uh, Mr. Bigger, anything to expand upon?
No, just more in compliance with the law.
Any questions for board members? Again, these will be, uh, votes for the first reading. Second reading of policies are going to be policy one-twenty-three-point-three, coaches' advisors, code of ethics, policy one-forty-point-one, extracurricular participation by charter cybers, cyber charter students, policy one-forty-four, standards for victims of violent crimes, policy two-oh-five, postgraduate students, policy two-ten, policy two-fourteen, policy two-twenty-four, three-twenty-two, and nine-fifteen, school organization groups. Mr. Bigger, anything to expand upon on those policies for second reading?
Just a reminder, you've given feedback on one and we changed the, um, nine-fifteen at the last meeting. So both of those changes were a reflection of the board's desires and wishes, just as a reminder.
Board members, questions or comments? Personally, I just comment, I'm still going back and forth on policy nine-fifteen, just expand upon my comments from previously. Um, whereas we've specifically carved out the, uh, foundation and then, um, but the boosters are included. And, um, I just don't know if, the more I've thought about this, PTOs, they usually have an administrator in their meeting. I assume a, a building principal is usually there. With a booster club, there's probably a lot of time there is no school representative there. Should there not maybe be some more stringent requirements for booster club versus a PTO since there is no school administrator oversight with those organizations? And then, uh, you know, if PTOs have to be part of a policy, if boosters have to be part of the policy, I don't unders- I still think there should be, if one be a separate policy, but there needs to be also a policy for the foundation. I mean, they continue to raise money based on Chambersburg area's school district, its name.
I, I mean, I can talk a little bit about the, uh, the boosters. Um, we certainly can add some things to that policy for the boosters, um, looking at Dr. Long because the policy was revived, I think, in eighteen-twenty sometime, uh, to kind of beef that area up with the boosters and make sure that we're in compliance with, uh, Title IX. Um, you know, when we looked at, when I was asked to address this policy, it was our concern about making sure that the PTOs and the PTAs had some guidelines to help prevent maybe potential fraudulent issues, uh, especially when you're dealing with, um, mostly cash basis. But if the board's desire is to, you know, have something different in the policy regarding the boosters, we can certainly work on that.
And that can be added. I think I mentioned this last meeting. That could also be added at a, a later time. I just wanted to share my thoughts and comments. Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, then these items eight-point-oh-two will go forward for a vote at our next meeting. Privilege of the floor, members of the audience are invited to comment on agenda and or non-agenda items. Uh, we don't have a sign-in sheet here, but that's okay. Any members of the audience wish to speak on any items, agenda or non-agenda?
I'm working this date. My wife is speechless.
Hmm, amen to that, Ms. Harbaugh, yeah. Be sleeping in the doghouse, Mr. Hayduk. Okay, uh, information, district enrollment summary, and disposal of books, equipments, and supplies. New business item, board members, I have one item, but I always wait till the end. Any items for discussion on new businesses would be a discussion, to have a future discussion, and then to eventually vote on a future, future discussion. Yes, sir?
I have a question about the, actually, the, the item before that.
No worries, go ahead.
Yeah, so in regards to the disposal of books, equipment, and supplies, can you just remind the board, um, how, what the life is on these current books? How long do we have them before they're cycled out and sold off like these are?
I get the pleasure of having this item attached to me, but unfortunately, it's, they're, they're not my equipment. I believe, and I'm, I'm gonna bounce back to Dave Kirkpatrick, that the life of these were about four years. Correct?
Partially due to the, um, the fact that they, uh, the, the wear and tear of them and the battery life just does not really allow them to, to last any longer than, than what they do.
Other items, questions, discussions?
Just, just a comment. Thank you for electing me vice president. I'll strive to do the job that you want me to do.
Thank you, Mrs. Gogler. I appreciate having you as my backup. My item, I wanted to just talk about a little bit, also goes with, uh, newly elected or re-elected board members, but I want to expand it maybe to all board members and to the mandatory training that we have to do as a newly elected member or newly re-elected member. You know, Mr. Bigger has mentioned before, he could do it. Uh, and the more I've thought about it, um, way back when, twelve years ago, when I first came on the board, it was done as a consortium of all the districts. We met at James U-, James U. Cannon Middle School on a Friday night and a Saturday, and, you know, all districts in the county participated in it. Uh, but I was thinking that, you know, that, okay, newly elected members or re-elected members have to do this, but would it not be a good practice for all board members to do it, and we just maybe did it in-house and tapped Mr. Bigger's, uh, skill or ability, institutional knowledge for it? Just, just a thought to, to throw out there, uh, you know, five-hundred-and-some school districts, sure you can always learn things from other districts, but I think it'd be a great opportunity for this particular board, just to have another workshop session to talk about the business of how we do our business.
I'd like to see a story max.
I'd like, I'd like to add that I think that would be an excellent idea. I think, uh, it's also a time to bond, and, um, I think it would be, uh, great to do in-house sessions for that. I like that idea.
What would that look like, Mr. Bigger? I'm gonna put you on the spot. I didn't tell you.
No, it's all right. I'd have to write the, uh, curriculum that complies with the act, uh, standards, get approved by, uh, the state to be a provider, which I've done before. Um, so I'd have to revisit the timelines in which I have to do that. So it's not overly complicated, but you are required to follow certain standards that they set. So trauma form destruction would be one, uh, budgeting policy, there's a set of standards. So I would just have to, have to match the curriculum to that content.
So it would eliminate the requirement to go up to mechanics, or the PSBA?
I, I would probably only do the one-hour one or the three-hour, not both. So I would need direction on which one you would want me to do if the whole board wants me to do that. And so there's for credit to comply, and then there's just because you want to be a better board. So you, you can give me either direction.
I think those of us who have been to the PSBA workshop will agree that it's very, very worthwhile, and it's already planned and presented, and to add that to Chris's responsibility, I don't see why we duplicate something that's already available at no cost to the district. As far as having additional professional development bonding as a board, I would be one-hundred percent in favor of a, an annual, um, professional development program presented by Mr. Bigger, not necessarily to meet state requirements, but just to enhance our, understanding of our particular district. But the opportunity to interact with other school board members from other districts has so much value, as I see it, in the fact that you realize that you don't have it so bad here in Chambersburg when you hear other problems in other districts, or you, um, get ideas from other districts. The PSBA availability is just so worthwhile, in my opinion.
I agree, I agree.
Uh, Mr. Bigger, Mr. Bigger, have you done that, have you done this in your previous district, um-
I did for the one-
Provided this-
I did for the one-hour training, not the three-hour.
It's three hours and five hours.
Okay, so as a, as a re-elected board member, would I need it one hour or would I need it three hours?
It's the three, it's three and five. Sorry, Fay corrected me. I do the, I did the three-hour one. So you as a newly elected or re-elected is the lar- longer one?
No, the new, newer-
New is five.
Okay, I would love, I would love to have that broken up and have you present that for us. That is my request.
Do you want to look at that calendar and-
I'm looking at it right now. I'm trying to decipher while you guys talk.
Okay, and we can talk about it in two weeks.
Mm-hmm.
Again, this is a discussion for a future discussion item anyway, right? We don't have to have an answer tonight. I don't think the timeline is that quick, is it? Any other board members' thoughts or comments? I know, I remember from my training, I remember it, I, it was up again. I forget who the facilitator was, but it still sticks in my mind. I've said it over and over again. She, I think it was a she, told us that-
This is Brumble.
There, we had two responsibilities. One, set a school calendar, and two, approve a budget. Everything else, we just let Chris do. Which I think was very simple advice, but if you think about it, at the end of the day, it's pretty darn accurate. We don't decide what they spend the money on, we just tell them how much money they can spend. We don't tell them what they are gonna teach, we just tell them what days they're gonna teach. I think that was her point. Any other thoughts or comments?
I concur with that idea you just posed. I think it's always an opportunity to get better. We should do it.
All right, well, Mr. Bigger, let us know-
Yep, I'll go over the process and the timeline.
If it's doable or not. Okay, any other items? Hearing none, meaning he's adjourned. Thank you.